All right, good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us tonight. Today is February 11, 2025. It's 7:05 PM. And I called this meeting Plank City Council to order. Clark, please call the rules.
Councilman Rafai.
President.
Councilman Musa.
President.
Councilman Sedban.
President.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Al-Samir.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
President.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for convenience. I am going to leave this to the United States of America. We are the law of the Constitution stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Do we have any community announcements tonight?
Nothing listed.
Proclamation and presentation. We have Plant Moran presentation.
Mr. Mayor, I have Brian here from Plant Moran to give a presentation. This is my name. We have done this many times in the past. Plant Moran has given us a forecast, and they have done so again this year. And it's Brian.
Good evening. My name is Brian Kimler, partner with Plant Moran. As City Manager mentioned, this is not the first time that we've done this. We were, I think, the first time was maybe five years ago that we were engaged to do a forecast of the city's general fund and an assessment of where you were at in terms of some fiscal health issues. And then a couple of years back, that model or that forecast was revised, and now we've revised it again. So, Clark, could you put that on screen? Perfect. Thank you very much. So why were we hired? Well, this city, like many others in Michigan and across the country, has had some financial difficulties over the years. Limits to your revenue, expenditures that seem to move and grow faster than any of your revenue sources do. And there was also this pandemic that made a mess of things for a bit, but at the same time, it also created some financial opportunities that many cities did actually benefit from. So we've updated all of the slides from the last time we were here. Some things have changed over the last two years. Some things that looked really good two years ago don't look quite as good today. Some things that maybe were a little bit frightening a couple of years ago will look a little bit better in today's light. So we'll just go through some of your primary revenue sources of your general fund, your primary expenses, and talk about some of the options that you'll have in the future to raise additional revenue. Because the city of Hamtramck doesn't have an expenditure problem as much as it has a revenue problem. And so the options for raising revenue are limited, but they do exist, and it will be up to the city to decide which path it wants to go down. So this is a summary from 2018 through the estimated 2025. The blue bar representing revenue, the orange bar representing expense. So prior to the pandemic, you were losing money every year, for the most part, three out of four years of your general fund. But because of some cost containment that happened during the pandemic, as well as some federal funding, you see here in 2022 and 2023, the city had a pretty good surplus. 2024, basically break even. And 2025, hopefully, fingers crossed, it will be break even. But there are some significant issues that you're going to have to address. One of them is the usage of the Dickerson jail site and the revenue that you used to receive from it. We'll get to that in a couple of slides. So these revenue sources that I'm going to go through now, and I will go through them quickly so it's not three hours, are presumed stable. So these are fairly reliable year-to-year. No significant risk associated with these that I would be overly concerned about. Obviously, nothing is perfectly safe, but these are presumed stable. So excluding the GM plant, your property tax revenues across the city should continue to rise. They are limited by the rate of inflation. Last couple of years, that's been pretty good. I'm sorry, limited by the lesser of 5% for inflation. But with the last couple of years of inflation being over 5%, you were able to have the maximum 5% growth. Now, inflation is back down, and even though it would be nice to have the property tax revenue, I think what it does to the expense side of the equation is not what you want to have. But if we continue to be in the 3-ish percent range for property taxes, given where you were coming from about 10 years ago, I think that's pretty good. General Motors was one of those things that did rebound. There was a temporary shutdown at the plant, came back online. The assumptions here in the future years are that the plant will continue to be at the current operational level. They could add another shift, certainly. There could be plant expansion, but we're just saying status quo for the time being is a safe assumption. State share revenue. This is one where you, the bump you see there in 2022 is due primarily because of the changes to the census. The population of Hamtramck grew from 2010 to 2020. And so once the census was calculated and certified as final, you received a good bump in some, call it back pay, of your state shared revenue. Over time, statewide, state share revenue has been going up about 2.5% a year. The, I just saw this morning, the governor's proposed a very preliminary budget estimate would have 4% increase in the state share revenue. I would be surprised if it ends up being 4%. I think around 2.5% is more likely. But at the same time, there's also been an announcement regarding tentative potential plans for road fixing in the state of Michigan. The plan that I saw today was, there was one coming from the governor's office, one coming from House of Representatives, and that it would take some of the sales tax out of buying gasoline, and in exchange would be an inflated gas tax. For the customer at the pump, they would be harmless. But your state share revenue comes from sales tax. So if there was a reduction in the sales tax because of that, yes, you'd end up getting more road money, but you would get less state share revenue. The estimate that I saw was statewide. If it were to pass as it was proposed, and granted, there are a lot of things that would have to happen before that, but the rough estimate was $95 million across the state that wouldn't go to local units of government for their general funds. District Court has come back, rebounded nicely. The estimate is that would just continue at an inflationary level. City did a really good job, and continues to do a good job, of collecting on income taxes. Prior to 2022, there was probably money left on the table as collection efforts weren't as strong as they are now. And the assumption is that now that you've got it where it's at, it should continue and continue to grow. Questionable revenue source. Clearly, the Dickerson facility. We don't know what's going to happen with it. I don't know that anyone knows what's going to happen with it. But what we do know is that you won't be receiving the $1.3, $1.4 million that you were getting every year for the time being. So that puts a dent in your budget. $1.3, $1.4 million is certainly nothing to sneeze at. That's a lot of personnel, that's a lot of repairs, et cetera, et cetera. So altogether, primarily because of the lack of funding coming from the Dickerson facility, you see that our forecast here does suggest that 2025 and the next couple of years would be less than what you received in 2023 and 2024. Now, as those inflationary increases on the other sources continue to grow, you'll get back to where you were in '24 and continue onward, but it's definitely a step backwards. For the purposes of these graphs, I did exclude the $16 million that you received from the state of Michigan for your pension system. That money didn't flow through City Hall. It went directly to MERS. And if I include, now, we had to record it. It is in your financial statements. But it would skew the graphs, and I thought that it would muddy the waters of the story. So we just pulled that $16 million in and out on the general fund revenues and expenses. So going forward, it's, you're looking at inflationary increases for the most part. Is there additional income tax that could be collected? I don't know, but I definitely think it's worth something to pursue to make sure that you're not leaving any money on the table in the city. Is this enough? And I think the answer, and I think you know the answer as well, is probably not. So now let's look at expenditures. So we added a bar to this. So we've got the, the blue is the actual expenses going back to 2018. Orange, just like for revenue, is the forecast going ahead. But we also included this increase or decrease. So you can see that there has been year-to-year some fluctuation in these expenses. And if you look into the forecast aspect, we're hoping that those expenses are able to go down. But we know and you know that the city has capital needs, and people have to be paid fairly in order to continue working here and not look at other options. And so over the next five or seven years, can you hold it down to, you know, half a million dollars a year increase in general fund expenses? I don't know, but I think it will be difficult. This is just another way of looking at your expenditures. Breaking it out, personnel and everything else. Personnel, including wages, fringes, retirement, hospital, insurance, et cetera. But your personnel makes up by far the most of your budget. I would say most communities, or the most fiscally sound communities, personnel, probably 65% to 70% of their budget. Yours is well north of 80. So it, not that you have too many people, I'm not suggesting that at all. I know that you don't. But what it suggests is that you don't have money for many of the other operational costs throughout the city. This is just breaking down personnel even further so you can see the wage component, the insurance component, and the pension component separately. The thing that's most striking to me is that we talk a lot about insurance and how much healthcare costs. But in terms of what the city of Hamtramck spends, healthcare is not anywhere near the majority or even an equal expense to wages and pension. Wages and pension are by far the greatest amount. So if there's a conversation about what can we do to bring down healthcare costs, sure, I'm sure that you have options. But just looking at this, you can tell that whatever you do to healthcare really isn't going to move the needle overall for the city. MERS is, your pension contribution to MERS is a very large portion of your budget. In 2025, it's estimated to be, by the time you get to June 30, over 30% of general fund money will go to paying for folks that aren't here anymore. The future numbers are coming from your actuarial evaluation, but a lot of that is tied to wages. So as wages go up, the pension contribution goes up as well. So the reality is, the MERS contribution is very significant. The retirees compared to your active employees, retirees outweigh the employees 3 to 1. So your, today's taxpayers are paying for folks that aren't providing service anymore. That's not unusual. Many cities in metro Detroit are like that. The older the city, the more mature the city. This is a problem in a lot of places, but it's still a problem. Just because a lot of folks have it doesn't mean it's any less of an issue. You'd have previously done a lot to cut healthcare costs. And so there isn't much, if any, meat remaining on that bone. So I don't know that I would spend a lot of time and effort looking at that. I would be talking to MERS. What can we do perhaps to extend out those payments even further and lower the cost year-to-year? Your non-personnel costs, so remember a couple of slides back, we said that's very small. It's a very small part of your budget. It's already quite lean, your budget is. Only $6 to $7 million a year for everything else other than people. And so any conversation about small items, and I know nickels add up, you know, quarters add up, but the amount of time it takes to save a significant amount of money when you're counting nickels, you don't have that kind of time. You have to find dollars. So whether that is on expenditure decreases, which may or may not be possible, most likely it's going to be on the revenue side. This is putting everything together. The forecast, revenue expenses, and fund balance. So you, at one point years ago, you were in a deficit. You were able to crawl your way out of that. In the late 2010s, you were using up some of your fund balance. And then during the pandemic, as you got the ARPA money and other federal sources, you were on the rise again. Fund balance peaked in 2023. But now, as those, that free money from the federal government, while that has now dissipated, your expenses continue to go up, and it's going up faster than your revenues. And so you can see that your fund balance is going to continue to go down unless you are able to right the ship. 2029, 2030, based on those assumptions that we've discussed, you'd end up in a deficit, at which point the state of Michigan would get involved again and require you to have a deficit elimination plan. Some combination of new revenue and less expense to crawl back out of that hole again. Now, this, we've only been talking about operations. So folks at home probably didn't see it, but the folks in the room saw it at the beginning of the meeting. There was an issue with the microphones. There was a comment about as soon as something, if we fix something, something else breaks. That happens all over the city. That happens with your vehicles, your roads, your buildings, everything. There are millions of unfunded needs throughout the city. Roads, police cars, fire trucks, water, infrastructure. Granted, water doesn't come out of the general fund. But just saying, you need a lot more revenue coming into the city in order to take care of all those needs. This is summarizing some of the other activity. So my conclusion in my summary is, you're doing a lot better than you were at previous points in history. But because of the loss of the Dickerson revenue, because your other revenue sources are growing slower than your expenses, you're not in a great position today. And it looks, based on everything that's happening, it does look like that the city's general fund will be in decline as expenses exceed revenues and you use up your fund balance. So you need a revenue source. You need new money coming in. Where might that come from? Well, your options are limited. You're already maxed out on your operating millage. Can't really count on state share revenue to go anywhere. Grants, while helpful, typically do not just give you money. It's to buy something already that you're going to have to buy. And so it doesn't do anything to help pay for people usually, other than cops grants or safer grants for fire folks. But that's not how you dig your way out. If possibly there's more income tax money out there that you can get, I would certainly be looking to that. And then further economic development within the city. Any vacant buildings or vacant parcels, or just rehabbing something that's already there, that would drive up your tax revenue. As far as property tax millage, your only real option is Public Act 345. And I know the city has talked about that for years and has tried several times to get that to pass. Unfortunately, the taxpayers and voters did not see it that way and have rejected that a couple of times. But if you're just looking at raising revenue and you want to go big or go home, 345 is the way to do it. That would take care of your pension obligation every year, or could. You'd be able to raise taxes to the necessary level to take care of those expenses, which we saw already was your number-two expense in the general fund behind wages. So in summary, summing up, you have to bring in more money. You have to figure out a way to do that. Squeeze it where you can, maybe take a big swing at 345 millage, and really go hard on public education. Do you like having the police presence, the fire protection? Do you like the services that you get? Well, it costs money, and we need more. Based on, I know this is, there's, you have something already of a capital improvement plan, but that should be a living document that is being constantly updated. And those capital needs prioritize, reprioritize, reprioritize again. As things break, as things become more of a desperate need, you have to put money back into the city, into infrastructure, or else it's going to fall apart. So that, that's not something you can cut in order to maintain operations. That's what the city did 20 years ago. It's what the city did 10 years ago. And it did not do anything to help the city, really. You're in a much better position than you were last time the state was involved, no question. You had a good string of a few years where you were able to bank or save some of that fund balance. And that's put you in a position that has bought you some time, not a lot of time, but it has bought you some time to work on that new revenue source. Or if you want to look at the cost savings, limited as they may be, you do have some time, but not that much. And so it will be up to city administration, city council, to decide what path you want to take. But don't wait too long. Because if we do this again in a couple of years and you haven't made significant strides, those slides are going to look that much worse. That's it as far as my prepared comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair. So Brian, from your presentation, you're telling me we have a chance to go for the state to take over, correct?
I didn't do that.
I wouldn't say take over. I'd say the state might get involved. Since the Flint water crisis, we haven't seen the state want to take over a city. I don't think that, I don't think that's changed. But they can't ignore it when you end up losing fund balance. In fact, when you, your fund balance goes down three years in a row, that trips something at the Michigan Department of Treasury, and they will get involved in some way. They want to participate in helping you stop that.
Mr. Chair. Last time we brought the state, when we was going to that situation, me and Mr. Zola sent a letter to Michigan State to come, look over and do some stuff. From your speech, it is very clear, either increase the tax or reduce the cost. Okay? These body have to understand that. That's all I'm going to say.
Actually, Councilman, he said it's a revenue issue, not a cutting issue. We're very lean, which means there's not much to cut.
He just mentioned also, reduce the cost also is the option.
Well, it's, it's two sides of the coin.
That's why you said, which way you go, it's your.
But the bigger problem is the revenue.
Yeah. Revenue we maxed out already. So we have options you give them. We have to give the people. If we send all those things to the board, they're never going to pass. They're not, so a lot of things.
They may with the right community education.
Well, things change. So remember, the first year we came, they came and they told us we would be down in one to two years. But then the next year, things went out.
Every 10 years.
So things change, you know, unexpectedly. And then when they came the next time, they showed a very good presentation, and I reminded them what happened last year. They told us we would be down. They said, you had some money on, you know, somewhere that you weren't able to collect it previously. So I can see that the jail is the major problem, but it looks like we have a solution for that coming soon. So that would solve the major problem, hopefully. And then we have, you know, continuous development of houses, new businesses. We expect the property tax to go higher in the coming, you know, two to three years. We have sold so many lots that will be developed soon. That will bring more revenue. The tax keep increasing, especially for the houses that are sold or recently over the last two or three years. So we have, and then the population continue to grow. I mean, there are some people that keep saying that it decreases. Now the population continues. We expect, we know that our population is way more than 30,000 because the last census wasn't accurate. And so hopefully, we see that people are having hard time to find houses for rent or to buy. So we know that there are a lot of people, you know, coming to our city. But we have to think about other, you know, there are some major projects that we keep hearing about, you know, coming to the city. We can't, you know, say for sure that they will happen soon. But I don't think that we will be in a difficult situation soon. It shows that we will be in deficit in 2030 according to the prediction. That's too far to judge. From now, six years, I'm sure a lot of things will happen. So I think we are in a good situation, especially with partial solution to the jail that we expect to happen. We don't want to talk about the details, but hopefully that will keep us in a good position. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's good to hear about the Dickerson, someone working on it. To come and take the place. Any idea about the mechanism?
Yeah, that's one of the major projects. I said we are not sure what's happening, but we are working on it. We just discussed with the city manager and the attorney last week about some, something. And then I directed the city manager to contact them because there is some development happening and major investment.
That's what I hear.
So we want to continue working with them to see if it's going to happen soon or not.
Mayor, if I may. There is absolutely no need to hit the panic button at this point, but what Plant Moran is basically saying is we need to be responsible. We need to be mindful, which we always have and always will be. We need to continue to maximize the revenues at any chance we get, which we do constantly. As you stated, there's potential developments on the horizon at any given time. We're always cultivating those. There's buildings always going up. There's always something potentially looming. Things can change rapidly, as you also indicated, that we're still working on the Dickerson facility. So I anticipate, we're actually having a couple of meetings coming up that I haven't even given you guys the dates on that yet. But Mr. Mayorway and I plan a meeting here real soon on that. And there's, there's always things going on. So I think we will be fine. In fact, I know we'll be fine. But there will be times where we just need to do the best we can and be mindful. And that doesn't necessarily mean start just cutting randomly things because the city has to function, and there's still expenditures that have to be made. But, you know, maybe we, you know, don't tap into the fund balance for, you know, a million dollars in extra alleys this year. You know, things of those should probably stem for a while, which we have been doing for the past couple of years. We've been kind of, kind of a little happy on payments more than we should. But thankfully, we have grants coming for that, too. So I don't think those things will stop, but we just need to be mindful of things like that.
Okay, thank you. Well, any more questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brian.
All right. The next item is the police annual report.
Mr. Mayor, I'm the chief, I have to get a ham check, and deputy chief, Molesky, here for this. And I believe they have a nice presentation made as well.
for this, and believe they have a nice presentation made as well.
So Mayor, thank you for giving us opportunity. District council, we're just going to give a quick overview, I know we have a few minutes. So, you know, my four Ts, which I call trust, transparency, training, and technology, these are the four items that I believe we're going to enhance the Hamtramck Police Department. It's a picture of one of our generals, there are youth academy bases. So in review, I mean, when I first came here, the first day I noticed that there was a lack of community engagement with, police engaging with the community. So that's something I take very seriously. When the first, I started the youth academy, which I started with 20 kids, ended up having 63 children, all of them from Hamtramck. One of the best events, mayor attended as well as the council here. Thank you for, you know, being very supportive of it. I think it brought the community together. And actually, some of my friends from New York decided to bring their children here because of that. And we talk about bringing people, how do we bring people to the city? Police department plays a big role in attracting good people to this community. I'll just play a small little video, just gives you a little insight, so you don't have to hear my voice. You going to put the volume?
Let me see if I can do it from here.
Wait. What is that? Vibe is down. And the, and the video round.
What is that?
The video, the vibe on videos now.
Okay, hold on, let me get back to it. I don't know what happened.
Want to try it? No. I guess you're right.
The department embarked on a journey to revitalize and redefine modern, 2024 was a year of transformation for the Hamtramck Police Department. Under the visionary leadership of newly appointed Chief Altehiri, the department embarked on a journey to revitalize and redefine modern policing. This is the 2024 recap of Chief Altehiri. Where we look back at how his four core principles, trust, transparency, training, and technology have reshaped public safety in Hamtramck. At the heart of Chief Altehiri's vision is trust, recognizes that trust is the foundation of effective policing. Chief Altehiri prioritized community engagement from neighborhood meet and greets, business engagement in youth outreach programs, officers work to build meaningful connections with residents. The department launched initiatives to increase accessibility and dialogue, ensuring every voice in Hamtramck's diverse community was heard. One of Chief Altehiri's hallmark achievements was the creation of the first ever youth and citizens academies, which not only brought residents of all ages in the fold to learn about law enforcement operations firsthand, but opened dialogue and insight to the department and community. Hand in hand with trust is transparency. Chief Altehiri introduced regular public briefings, social media updates, and a standalone online portal where residents can track and follow crimes with the weekly integration of CompStat. This unprecedented level of boldness has fostered accountability and strengthened the public's confidence in their police force to better serve the community. Chief Altehiri emphasized training. Officers underwent various training sessions in internal affairs, tactics, cultural sensitivity, and mental intelligence spots. Finally, technology has been a game changer. Under Chief Altehiri's leadership, the Hamtramck Police Department implemented cutting-edge tools such as enhanced data analytics, broad prediction and assessment software, and the development of a drone technology program to improve operational efficiency and public safety. These advancements were complemented by a department-wide upgrade of vehicles, weapons, and communication systems, ensuring that officers have the resources needed to deliver their best. Another critical milestone was recruiting. To bring staffing up to full levels to attend higher practice, Chief Altehiri is committed to diversifying the force and recruiting top talent has brought fresh energy and perspectives to the department. 2024 is just beginning. Chief Altehiri is committed to trust, transparency, training, and technology. Alongside groundbreaking initiatives, has set a new standard of policing in Hamtramck. Altehiri states together, we are building a safer, stronger community for all.
I appreciate that. Also, if I would add to a fifth principle, that fifth principle would be teamwork, because you can't do anything without creating a great team, something I, that's why we recruited a good friend of mine, David Adoncheck, as well my deputy chief. Without them, we can't succeed. You can't do it alone. And I, I believe that wholeheartedly that creating an effective team will take this department to a whole other level. Some people need a little more development, maybe they need training, but you got to, we work together to get where we need to be. Council, please, deputy chief, who's been a great part of mine, and he's been really effective in bringing down crime. So he'll give us a little bit of the stats.
Mayor Council, thank you for having us. Just going to go over the annual crime for 2024. I know social media seems like crime's up everywhere and everyone's up in arms, but as you can see, we're doing pretty well. Murder obviously is down, biggest crime down 100%. CSC down 50%. Robbery's down 20%. We just had a rash of them, but we're in the process of, I think we got some good leads so we can put an end to that. Police assaults are up a little bit, so we're going to keep working, do what we can to do to be out there. Burgers are down, and I think that's, we were getting hit by, and our detectives did a great job and ended a crew that was hitting us in Detroit that will go to later, so that was a real big part of the detectives in the department working on that. Larcenies are up. It's hit and miss because they changed it now to retail fraud, it used to be separate. So it looks like it's up a lot, but I don't think it's probably very similar to what we've had in the past. And we all know auto theft, right? Every day in the crime log and everything else, auto theft, but it's down, which it's Levonia, where any city you go to, it's up, right? It's the technology of these cars, so we're, we're out there every day doing the technology we have to do that. Vehicle crashes are down, vehicle fatalities are down 80%. So the overall crime is down 10.235%, which is, you know, steps in the right direction. Obviously, we like to be down lower, that's what we're just able to do, but hopefully by next year we come in and it's down 25%. You know, I mean, we're trying to do that that way. Training with a 3.7 drop from 2020 to 2024. So we're getting a lot of new officers dedicated to the city and we're going to continue to be out there and, you know, keep moving in the right direction on the crime stats.
Just to say, my first key, we didn't have a system to actually calculate, you know, what's the crime result compared to last year. We had a very staggering report, it wasn't condensed, wasn't utilized effectively, so I introduced CompStat, which their YPD has been introduced way back during the Commissioner Brand years. And that's what we're implementing here. We're tracking stats, but we're also tracking crime trends and patterns. And so we're able to tackle crime effectively. But we're not doing so, we can't do it without our partners from the DEA, the FBI, as well as the county. And our special deputy, the downtown chair, we give a little insight on that. Why is it so effective to work with these fellow agencies and local agencies?
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Mayor, Councilman, so a lot of the cities know that we've had somebody assigned to the Drug Enforcement Agency for, since the mid 1990s, for a long time. The city has recognized much benefit from having that person assigned to that unit. There's obviously benefits, but it's also a very proactive and insightful role to the opioid pandemic that we're seeing across the country. And obviously, having one of the major border crossings here within 10 minutes of our city, with Ambassador Bridge and another one in Port Chastity happening, it's, it's a, it's a good thing to have that, that officer still assigned to that unit. The local and county partnerships. Historically, the city of Hamtramck has had a stolen auto unit. I know stolen auto, like the chief had said, the deputy chief had said, is a very hot topic in this city. Historically, Hamtramck has had a, its own auto theft unit, but it was very limited. You have a couple officers partner with Highland Park, and it didn't realize all of the potential capabilities of partnering, partnering with a partnership like Detroit with their commercial auto theft unit. That's one of the units that, that I actually partner with them, but we are able to actually realize substantial, substantial technology pieces of fraud equipment, fraud predictive modeling, access to, you know, when somebody steals a vehicle in Hamtramck, within 60 seconds, they're already at our border, maybe, maybe, you know, 90 seconds. So by having that resource and then talking with Detroit, most of our vehicles end up there. So by partnering with them to be able to utilize that cross-sharing of data that hasn't happened historically, is really monumental to help bring this down because we're identifying where these vehicles are going and then sharing resources. They're able to provide additional officers for us as well. The county component piece, yes, I'm deputized as a special deputy, I'm assigned to a fraud unit specifically with the opioid crisis, as well attached to their narcotics unit, as well as a fraud component. It's kind of unique that we happen to follow Plant Moran's proposal. Nobody usually wants to follow that type of presentation, but this is something that actually the chief and the city manager Max Gamberino and myself have had meetings on with respect to some of that revenue model piece that we talked about. We've already had discussions, and proactive discussions that we're getting ready to roll out with our income tax department, with PAM, that we are already reviewing reports for fraud against the city for, for them, failure to pay income tax, basically, business as well as residential. We're anticipating this program to kick off here in the next 30 to 60 days. That will have potential realization of revenue upwards of $300,000 to $500,000 that people are not paying. There are substantial businesses that are not paying, there's also substantial residences, homeowners that are not paying as well. So it's not, you know, it's not something that, you know, every other city doesn't see, it's just something that we have to bring back into compliance, and it's a substantial revenue component. So that's one of those as well. And then the last piece of joint partnership that we have that we really don't advertise, most cities don't, is our cooperation with the FBI. We have a joint terrorism task force. Actually, our deputy chief is assigned to that unit right now. We have another officer that's going to be, now that he's deputy chief, being, replacing him with that. But basically, that partnership is there in case a large terroristic event were to happen. The department share the resources, share the technology, how to respond if something were to happen locally, as well as other higher profile things that happen. So with that, that piece is on there, it's just not something we advertise on a daily basis, but that's all. Finishing.
All right. So something also, internally, we had a lot of changes, we created a lot of policy, overtime policy that we didn't have in the past, a lot of evaluations, we were not, also didn't have evaluation. That's a big thing here. I know a lot had a little battle with some people, some of them are not here today, but we're glad to have deputy chief lead the way on this, making sure that we evaluate our officers, are they working effectively, are they doing the right thing by our community? So these things are very important to me.
Like deputy chief, our chief had said, sorry. We've been, you know, working together throughout the history of this department, the first year, like anything else, you're getting trained, you're getting evaluated, and then, you know, you're just getting evaluated in day-to-day work, but now we wanted to develop a yearly, hey, here's your evaluations, different things. And I mean, the process of getting that started, obviously the interactions, how you're dealing with the community, you're getting graded on at different evaluations there. The safety, safety for community and for us is a huge thing when we have a younger police force, it's very important that we're teaching, you know, somebody on my, that's old like me, got to make sure the younger guys can handle it, because I, you know, getting on, going on running anyone. The reporting of evaluating officer documentation, report writing readiness for daily operations, it all goes hand-in-hand with everything else. We, you know, did the eye test, but now it's developing this program, and by next year when we're doing this report, we'll have a fully full-on implementation of the report for the evaluation. So it's a very good thing we're going to be doing in the near future, so.
Last but not least, we're still working on the city manager and just restructuring the whole command structure, because it's very important to like know where people stand as well as subpar amounts of organization in order to effectively address, you know, safety issues, organizational structure had to be before. That's not the only one, as we're currently realizing now, but we have a structure which is clear and identified by everyone in the department as well as the council and everyone else. It's important to have that structure, to have an effective team, but also effective organization. And highlights, I mean, like I said, this has been a great honor for me to be a chief here. I'm very honored to really, a lot of people, when they told me, Janelle, who's a commanding officer, a very reputable person, could have been a chief in the YPD, and I always tell them, I'm very proud to not only be a resident here, but achieve a police man. I'm proud of the city, proud of the people I work for, proud of the council, proud of the mayor, as well as the team, our city manager, everyone. So thank you for giving me the opportunity and here to keep you safe, that's what we do.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. Chief. Oh, no, CompStat for the 2024, because people say there's a lot of theft, you know, in 2024. So, and that shows that some of the things weren't down. So if you, if it's possible, like, you know, you post that, we're able to share, show, you know, how was it previously and how is it now, that there is some of the, you know, items or things are actually less, like a car theft.
Can I, can I add something, chief? I just, real quick, you would know, back in the day, so when I first started, and this is, city manager and all this, 2001, in the city alone, I think we averaged over 700 cars a year stolen, okay? That same, we're down to about 120, okay? 700 stolen, and that's not including the attempted stonings, which were up near 700, 800 itself. So we had about 1,500 just stolen cars, but we didn't have social media, right? So no one complained, it was just the way we go. So we are working on, but yes, it's a good way to get posted, but I just wanted the residents to know that it's came a long ways. It doesn't seem like it, because no one wants to get their car stolen, but, I mean, it was bad, you remember. I mean, literally, if you had a Dodge Caravan, if you didn't have it bolted through the door with eight clubs on it, it was getting stolen. So it was just unfortunate, but we have came a long ways, but just the perspective of it, which is crazy, people don't believe me that there was that many cars, but if we go back, it was that crazy, so.
I just want to thank you, Council, since you mentioned that, because, you know, there's different perceptions and reality, and it's up to us to really present the facts. We do post the CompStat video, but also the reports, I mean, the other report, you know, send it to the city manager, who can share.
I'm saying this latest one.
Oh, yeah.
For the 2024.
Oh, yeah.
So people could see.
Yeah, we do weekly CompStat.
I see, I see that. But also the video, if you post a video by itself, you know, that's true, the history of the whole department.
That's why it's so important to have data, because I think the data-driven is based on science, not based on just luck or perception, one, based on facts, that's how we address our crimes, with facts, you know?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. How many full-time police officers do you have?
You can't answer that.
No? So specifically when it started, I see a lot of recent hiring, like all those ex-officers, protective, everything after hiring, 10% climb down. Do you think it's satisfactory, or what is your personal opinion today?
Yeah, I think a lot of it goes back to, you know, technology definitely helped us a lot. Our MOE, the memorandum of understanding, we have, we still have a lot of good share, you know, intelligence sharing technology with Detroit, that helped us tremendously. We had the deputy chief himself of Detroit come here and give me the MOE to sign, they want to build our relationship. So there's a lot of stuff I want to build back, because at the end of the day, we need their help, we need other people's help, but also have an additional star experience. The last officer we hired, he's from the city of Flint, comes with over 20 years of experience, former detective. These are the kind of people we want on this department. We just lost two when I first got here, they left. So I think now we stand, a great standing when it comes to personnel, it's just, it really goes back to development. We got to develop these officers, not just the matters happening there, but really just, you know, making sure that we develop them to be effective. How are they addressing crime? That's the whole, the whole notion of creating this evaluation system is really to push them to be more effective police officers, you know? And when you get that call, how are they addressing that call? Are we following up with detectives? That was something I think Councilman Raffi had mentioned, that there's issues with the follow-up, and that's why we had to move some people around, change personnel. So I think we're doing great, and we have, I think we have a great team here, great people doing great things.
Thank you, Chief. I think we have, we like the idea that you work to diversify the police department, which is a great thing. I think the council has been doing everything needed for the police to enforce, you know, to empower the police department. The generous increase in salary for the next, for the next five years is something big that we approved, I think over 1.3 million or so would be given as a salary increase. That makes you equal to the neighboring cities like Detroit. And then we approved buying all the new vehicles for the police. I know that you hired new people, but I heard that some people left. I don't want to know the reason in public, but that's something that, you know, we should, I mean, you should take into consideration to see what issues, what was the cause behind that. And we appreciate everything you do to serve the community.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the mail, the counseling, like I said, you've been supportive of all the events from the youth academy, the citizen academy. been supportive of all the events from the youth academy, citizen academy, and under the day, support that we're critical of the police department. That's why I'm here. And so I take those criticisms as an opportunity to fix the problems and advance the police department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, your call.
Next is the library report. Great.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Usually the library does not report to the council because it's a completely independent, separate organization, but we've been asked to do so just to, for your own information. So we're prepared to do our report, but we have been asked to cut it down to five minutes or less.
Or else?
Or less.
Or less.
So the Hamtramck Library is under the direction of Tamara Sahatska. She has been a director of the library for the last 28 years. She is the longest-serving director in the history of the library right now. Now, just for your information, there are four different laws that set up libraries in Michigan. The first one is the district libraries, which comprise of more than one territory or city or township or school district, and these are funded by the taxpayers. And all the board members are elected, so they're totally anonymous. The second group, second set of laws sets up county libraries, which are funded by the county and governed by the county. The third set of laws, that's Act 164 under our library setup, are municipal libraries, which are funded by the taxpayers of the city. They are, it's governed by a library board, which is appointed by the mayor. However, the policies, the programs and everything that the library board does is totally anonymous. So the libraries are independent and that has been done to minimize the political connection between elected officials and the services of the library. And the fourth type of laws sets up department libraries. Department libraries are set up usually by the city and they are funded by the city and they are governed by the city. So we are part of the municipal libraries, which are under the mayors, the appointment of directors is by the mayor. However, they are totally anonymous from the direct political direction of the city. Then there are levels of libraries and these levels are basically set up by the number of people they serve and the type of services they provide. When the current director took over, the, the Hamtramck Library is a class four library. There are seven classes. So we're in the middle. Over the years, the, the level of the library has increased to level five library because we service more people now and provide more services than years ago. Years ago, when Tamara became a director, there were two computers for the public and they were at 64K internet speed. Currently, there is 41 computers and they are anywhere from 100 meg to a gig speed. So there is a big difference. And also as far as the usage of the library, it has shifted a lot from the books and magazines to electronic, electronics, especially after COVID. Most of the students who used to crowd the library, like sometimes 200 students were there after school. Right now they have computers. They can connect to the library on their computers and utilize the services like Canopy, Overdrive or Hoopla and so on. So it's an electronic connection, less visitors, physical visitors, but more users when it comes to that. The library board, those are the five people that govern the library. Now they have complete control over the library finances, policies, services and so on. Now, the president of the library board is Mr. Bitner. He's a local businessman. The Kathy Christie, she's in finances. She is currently the treasurer of the library. Then Sandra Jabril is currently serving as a secretary of the library. The Mr. George Gorday, he is the vice president of the library. He's an engineer. And Mr. Dobrovsky is a retired librarian, thanks to whom we are getting state aid because in order to get state aid, we need to have two librarians in the library. And the only librarians in the library currently is Tamara Sahatska. She's a class one librarian, which is the highest level from the seven levels. And Mr. Dobrovsky, who is a class two librarian, and he's doing it part-time. Now, the library also has staff, which comprises of one full-time employee, who is the library clerk, and four part-time employees. So there is, there isn't much staff in the library. Now, how is the library funded? The library, most of the funds coming from the village, which is a permanent village, 108 mills. Now, we also get the state aid. We get the county penal fines. We get individual donations, corporate donations, and recently, thanks to the city manager, we are getting interest on the money in the bank. For many, many years, at least for 20-some years, the city would hold on to the money that it collects for the library and we would never get the interest. And thanks to Mr. Garberino, he changed that policy. So the money that belongs to the library is earning interest as well. And it's a considerable amount because it's about 20,000 a year. Now, we also get some federal grants, state grants and county grants. Oops. This is the breakdown. So most of the money is from the village and then the green part, the large green part are the grants and the other parts are the state aid, county penal fines, interest and donations. Then how are the expenses? Most of the expenses of the library are for the payrolls, for the salaries and wages. And then we also have a large expense for the library network, to which we belong now. Being part of the library network gives us access to all the books in the network. The library has about 70,000 books on hand, but if we don't have some, some book that is not in the library, we can get it within two or three days by contacting the library that has that book and it is being shipped to us and the patron can receive it. Now, again, we have the internet connection that is available to all these patrons who do not have computers. And also we have those digital services like Canopy, Hoopla and Overdrive. Now, some of the other parts of the expenditures are the maintenance of the building, the utilities, programs and activities, equipment and furniture and capital expense. Our biggest capital expense occurred in the 2324 year when we needed to replace the air conditioning system, which was originally installed in 1956. So it died completely and because of the type of system that was installed, there is no longer, you can no longer repair those systems. We had to change completely and install a system on the roof. However, it is connected to the ventilation system that is still in the basement, so we don't have any noise in the library. The noise is reduced. And basically this is, this is the way the expenses are split up. The payrolls is the biggest part, then the benefits for the employees, and then the expenses, expenditures on the top left for the library. Now, the library board controls all library finances. Library provides reports on their finances to the city controller on monthly basis and the city maintains records of all financial transactions. Now, this is something that is done by agreement between the library and the city. Some libraries do not utilize the services of the city. We have been, this is the option that we do have. We have excellent cooperation with the city and especially since Max Garberino came in, he has really, really been a great person, great supporter of the library. Now, also, one of the biggest reports that we have to do is the annual financial reported we file with the state of Michigan and specifically the library of Michigan. And this is a very extensive report, has 15 parts and it's 32 pages with print that you have to use a magnifying glass to read basically. That is done once a year. Now, the programs in the library are, there's a large variety of programs. Probably right now, the biggest, the most attended programs are the ESL classes, which currently are held four times a day, two classes, I mean, four times a week, two classes a day. And there is about 40 to 50 people that participate in the ESL programs. And then we also have the computer lab, summer reading program for children, storytimes for children. Then we have official city programs like inauguration and others. We have people that come in for court-appointed, let's say, if they have to be in court. A lot of times the court dates are on the internet. So these people come into the library to be in court, basically. And we have art displays, we have poetry readings, we have book signings and evenings with authors, displays and presentations, community meetings and town halls and a lot more. It would take a long time to sort of mention all of those. Children are probably some of the biggest users of the library. Now, I have to mention at this point, Mrs. Mayrick. Mrs. Mayrick has been, she was in the, very active in the African-American community. She also worked for the city during her work years, but afterwards she devoted a lot of time to the library and she was the one who was pretty much in charge behind all the African-American History Month programs. And they were really nicely organized by her. She passed away a couple of years ago, but she was one of the longest-serving library director, board members in history. Now, one of the things that are first in the Hamtramck is the organization or setup of TV broadcasting company. This is the first one the city ever had and that's the Hamtramck Public TV, which was set up and organized through a grant that the library applied for and receives. And currently, for instance, we have been filming for the last 20 and a half years, all the council meetings. So that is a permanent record right now. We have been filming a lot of the programs that happen in the city. We have inaugurations of the city government ever since, I think, well, at least since 2000. So a lot of these programs have historical significance. We have a lot of meetings, evenings with authors. Probably the most prominent author was Hemingway. That's Valerie Hemingway. She, she was the daughter-in-law of Ernest Hemingway. And when she came to the library, we had about 400 people come to see her. So she is the most prominent visitor when it comes to authors. And in conclusion, just wanted to say that the, well, I think I stated most of the facts about it, but the, the library building itself is about 12,000 square feet, which isn't a very big building. We have two parking lots and the funding for the library, which comes from the residents, 1.8 mills, comes out to about 33 cents per person, per resident in Hamtramck per week. So comparing to all the other expenses, it is not very much. It is one of the most efficient departments or organizations in the library, in the city of Hamtramck. And I guess, well, we would like to thank the city manager for the great cooperation that you have set up and for his continued support.
You're 10 minutes past your deadline.
Oh, is it?
Fine. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. You mentioned 20,000. Was that just the interest of your money or?
20,000 was interest.
A year?
A year, yeah.
Well, we move to the last item.
No wonder we weren't giving it to you.
We have proclamation for the Bengaladish International Mother Language Day. Do you want to?
I can read it.
Read it.
Whereas by United Nations resolution, International Mother Language Day is celebrated on the 21st of February each year. And whereas the date represents the date in 1952, when students demonstrating for recognition of their language Bangla, as one of the two national languages of the Pakistan, were shot and killed by the police in Dhaka, the capital of what is now Bangladesh. And whereas the city of Hamtramck, with its rich tradition of cultural diversity, agrees with the United Nations Educational, Scientific and Cultural Organization, that languages are the most powerful instrument of preserving and developing our tangible and intangible heritage. And whereas all moves to promote the dissemination of native languages will serve not only, sorry, not only to encourage linguistic diversity and multilingual education, but also to develop fuller awareness of linguistic and cultural traditions throughout the world and to inspire solidarity based on understanding, tolerance and dialogue. Whereas this year we will join together in our hearts to respect and appreciate the culture and languages and when combined make us better. That, when combined make us better, sorry. Signed, Mayor Amargad.
Thank you. All right. We move to additions and additions. Do we have any?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. We move now to the public comment.
I have Abraham Al-Jahim.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, City Council, City Attorney, City Clerk and Chief. I've been here for a couple of meetings and you guys mentioned any community announcements. Well, I would like to thank Chief Taheri and David and Andy, the police department, for doing the first Hamtramck Citizens Academy. And the first day of the academy, I thank Councilman Hassan and Councilman Abu Musa for coming and sharing the time with the academy and the citizens. And Abu Musa and Hassan offered to bring coffee and donuts for the, for the citizens academy. And thank you for everything you're doing, chief. You're putting Hamtramck on the map. Of course, thank you, Mayor, during the election. You did a phenomenal job. And that's one thing. The second thing I want to talk about is the good relations with Washington. Take advantage of it, Mr. Mayor. Go to the White House, go to the Congress, meet with the Democrats, meet with the Republicans. Election is over. Now it's time to bring money to the city. Max, please, start traveling, go to Washington and talk to the administration, bring some money back to the city. Well, we got three years.
We're gonna pay for trauma.
You know what? I'll pay for that, Max. Please. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bill Meyer? Mr. Bill Meyer?
We had to make the hero. Well, that was three great, long reports, all in one meeting, it's very interesting. Hello, mayor, and council, and the manager, attorney, and happy Valentine's Day to three years at a time, our city clerk. And thank you for the work that you do, chief of police, what an improvement, what progress we made in this city, thank you. So, I'm here because I missed, I wasn't informed about the parking meter special event last week, and, you know, I've been active with that issue for a long time. I'm glad a lot of business owners showed up, but, you know, many didn't show up, there was just a small portion of them. And I think it would have been a social matter, it would have been good to have everybody be invited to that event, because it affects the whole city. So, I just want to mention that, three years ago, when they first put in the meters, so one Hamtramck did a survey of the business owners on the street and reported to it here at the council meeting. We had about forty-five businesses in Joseph Compo between Coniff and Evelyn. And they were given a poll, a form to fill out, a poll regarding the new meters. They all filled them out, we had forty-five fill them out, seventeen of them actually responded in person. Two questions were asked only on this questionnaire, and the questions were, were you consulted before the parking meters were put in? And a hundred percent of the people we talked to said, no, no one gave us information. Secondly, what should be done about them, was the second question, and all but one person said, get rid of them. Other comments included, this is the worst thing that ever happened to Joseph Compo, new meters are ruining our business, people don't want to learn the technology, many don't have the phone app, where do workers park, you know, they took away more parking spaces by putting in the meters, unnecessary yellow lines in places where they shouldn't be, so we could have more. Can I get another minute? Oh, no, I have one minute, right, okay, I'll ask for it. Go back to the old style, everyone was against the meters. I hope you understand that, because it hasn't proven to be good. It's remove the cameras, people were scared about the cameras. We got a bad deal from the company, one owner said, sixty parking spaces were removed in the project. The wait time should be extended to ten minutes, which I think has been since then. Lower ticket costs, you know, growth point tickets are ten dollars each. Take growth point, where they have more money than we do. Okay, so, not one owner that was pulled spoke positively about the meters. We had a few the other day that did speak positively about them, they might change their mind, because they're concerned mostly about if you don't take meters, other people are going to park there, and then they want to have a place to put the customers. So, one solution is, can I get another minute?
You can.
Okay, one obvious solution we all talked about back then was put up signs. I mean, buy a hundred signs, that costs a lot less than whatever you're paying to this company. Signs that say something like, no parking from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., that's all. Then nobody's going to park overnight, you're not going to have people there forever, and anybody can park, it's free. You don't need to have money at twenty thousand or fifty thousand, whatever it is, but you're talking about millions of dollars in our budget. Why rip the people off for more money? Because back then, that's what was happening, we were trying to find money from everywhere we could possibly find it. Parking tickets, fortunately, the, wow, time flies, doesn't it? Yeah, so, I'm so glad that we don't have to squeeze the people here out of more money by putting in parking meters, we don't need them. More people will come for businesses, and the business owners will be happy. And that's, it's a financial issue, and you had your report from, the owner report, you know? We need, we don't need the money from parking meters, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I just want to give you a copy of the committee, the committee, who is that, the committee, unit of committee?
I have an email I'm going to read that I received on January 30th for a public comment. This is Mohammed Shubha, Ms. Faraj. My name is Mohammed Shakat Ali Shubha. I used to live in Hamtramck, but I recently moved temporarily to a nearby city. I was watching the last council meeting, which was very interesting, and I heard someone accuse Councilman Mohit Mahmood of not living in Hamtramck. The statement is completely false and a blatant lie to the community. I've been to his home in Holbrook several times, most recently, about two weeks ago around midnight. Even though I've moved temporarily, Hamtramck remains my home at heart, and I visit frequently. During my last visit, I met a friend for dinner and later called Mohit to see if he was home. He invited me over and we hung out for about an hour before I left. It's disappointing to see people spreading false information and trying to tarnish someone's reputation. I strongly condemn this kind of behavior, wishing everyone a very happy and peaceful 2025. That's it for public comments.
All right, thank you. All right, we move to the consent agenda. This is approved with a single motion and no discussion. We have the first item, approval of minutes from the January 28, 2025, private city council meeting. B, approval of invoice registered date ending February 11, 2025. C, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending February 11, 2025.
Motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No objections?
No, sir.
Thank you, we have a public hearing. Resolution 2025-12B, public hearing and second reading of Hamtramck zoning ordinance text amendment, chapter 155.
Motion?
Should I start? This is to start the public hearing at 8:21. So, Councilman Fai, motion, Abu Musa, second bid. There's nothing for public comment?
Motion? To close?
Eight twenty-one, any discussion with the board, with the council?
No.
Can we vote on it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Councilman Mahmood?
Yes.
Councilman Al-Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to vote?
Yes.
Is that a yes on your vote? Yes, Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-12B approved.
Thank you. We have no, no new business. That's interesting, for the first time.
Better remember the last time this happened.
All right.
Well, we have skipped meetings, so, I mean, technically, that would have been business.
Well, we've had no forum, but we've never had no meetings for no business items. Not in the four years I've been here.
We'll get some extra ones for next year.
It's okay. All right, so, we move to the reports. And I will start with mine, but I actually didn't have anything prepared, but I'll tag everyone who showed up tonight to this meeting. And I want to talk about something that's, sounds very important to some of the council members. They are worried about the registration for the coming election. And so, it would be my ethical duty to announce whether I'm running or not. So, I know you have until February 20, maybe?
Twenty-first, Friday is the twenty-first.
So, would you like me to announce today?
Struggle roll?
No. So, I will make sure to let you know by before February 20, whether I'm running or not. But you don't have to worry, I will let everybody know before they run out of time, if I'm not running. But if I'm running, and I would like you to stay as you are, I don't want anybody to compete with me. So, we'll find out by next week, hopefully.
How will you be announcing it, just out of curiosity?
I will make sure to post something.
It's not going to be like a trail and fine things and letters around the city?
No.
Yeah, I'm there, huh, yes.
Public TV?
Public TV too, yeah, maybe, you know, some kind of celebration or ceremony, you know, helped by Councilman Hassan or something.
Making animal slaughters?
I know.
Well, he knows, as long as they're, as long as they are.
Only on fish.
You're going to lamb?
No, he knows what I like, chicken, so, has to make sure there's chicken in the party, anyway. So, with that, I don't have anything else to say, but I think the next couple of weeks will be interesting. We will, you know, we shall hear something that will be of interest to the residents of Hamtramck, and if there's a possibility that I will be able to run again, you know, without any inconvenience, then I will do it. But like I said, I will make sure that I will give a fair opportunity to everyone on time. So, with that, thank you so much, everyone, and we have mayor Pusam report next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I want to thank everybody for coming here tonight. I want to thank for the chief and his team for that great presentation. Also, Craig, you know, for giving, Greg, I mean, sorry, for that presentation so people can know how the library process. And then, you know, I want to give my deep apologies to Mr. Lukman and his brother for the passing of his mother, that passed away on Sunday. You know, all my thoughts and prayers to him, to his, you know, brother, and all family members and their loved ones, and may he rest in peace. Also, another member of our community who's always been active in our community, it's a young guy who just lost his dad yesterday, Amran Toda. So, I want to give also, you know, my condolences to him and his family. And nothing more to say, I want to wish you a great night and be safe.
Thank you. Next is city council report, who would like to start?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to all of our audience, thank you to all those present, our presenting, presentation. I was looking at the review, and I saw something about the, we purchase snow machine, and people comparing about the starting ice. So, people watching their money, I just want to make sure next time when we purchase something, we, you know, smartly think of what can we accomplish on this purchase.
On the what?
Snow machine, snow cleaning truck that we bought.
Snow piles?
Snow piles, yes, no, I think they have interviewed for me or something. Yeah, they say the starting ice, what a machine, it don't need salt, they don't need to salt. So, and the salt can make damage to the.
Well, we're sticking with salt, we're not going to do sand, some cities are using sand.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So, they're saying that sand is better, I'm not sure, you know, how much better it is, and if it's better for the pavement.
Right.
It goes to the drain also.
It goes to our drains, and we don't need to.
How you like, and how you think?
Oh, okay, so, I mean, if it's, I don't know, I see there's some news, so I just wanted to make sure about this. Also. Shobo, noble worship to all Bengalis that live in our city. Happy Valentine's to a lovely Valentine's out there, and, you know, have a great night, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you, mayor, city council, city manager, police chief, and the people who come in to join with us today. Thank you, police chief, last week, two weeks ago, it was a really good event, you, our subject, and Greg. Thank you for bringing the very nice picture, to bring with us. And I'd like to invite all of you, especially elected officials, mayor, city manager, police chief. We have International Mother Language Day is coming 29th, actually 21st of February in the morning, 12:01 a.m., so please join with us. I remember 2014, I became first council member for Mayor Karen Mijaski. I was the one, first one who bring this one event to the city of Hamtramck. From this day, to continuously we are running for this event, city of Hamtramck. So, please join with us, and I hope we're going to see the city manager invite all those Bangladeshi communities, organizations, to invite them, come and join with us for the International Mother Language Day. It is very important, because United Nations celebrating those things, White House celebrating those things, all over the world, people celebrating International Mother Language Day. And I hope see you there in the 21st of morning, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, everyone, they come today for the meeting. I'd like to thank the chief police, what they doing, and the report. I know, remember a couple of time I didn't show up, the citizen patrol, but when I didn't show up, it's not I don't support, I support everything in Hamtramck, even the police. And I like everyone, they care Hamtramck, police and other one. When people, they do something for Hamtramck, I like them, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Hassan, go ahead.
I thought it was this Friday, but since you're taking little more, you have to bring more money. Okay, so, in case, I respect you, but still, I, even though you run, if I decided I'm run, there is nothing personal. Last sixteen years, most longest service council elected official after Karen Mijaski is me. I'm also getting tired of this. If my time I put somewhere is not bringing value, I don't want to be, that's why I feel. If I run, I'm running, and of course, it will be real hard campaign. And going to be, my three follower will be here. If my three follower not here, I'm not going to be here, I don't need it. I can put it somewhere in the other city. So, nothing personal, and again, I respect you, we all together, we do very good job so far. And also, I'd like to thanks to the police department, police chief and deputy chief, and detective. Yes, so actually, I see your activity also in the street, a lot, that's good thing. And Citizen Academy, normally, our immigrant people always scared to the police, police, police. Now, the kids, you know, hanging around the deputy chief, police chief, detective, those kinds of things is very good for the community, and that's why they're not, you know, they are not the people from the different world. So, that's good thing, good environment, good practice. And a lot of things city manager has done right now, within few weeks, that is really appreciable. It could be my last council meeting, this one, it could be. So, thank you, Hamtramck, thank you, residents, thank you, work with you guys together. Yeah, if I don't get elected, I don't have to come here. So, in that case, if I get elected, I will be here. In that case, this is could be the last council meeting for me, and thanks for service, thanks for cooperation, thank you, Hamtramck.
Thank you, Councilman Hassan, good luck, whatever happens. If I run for the mayor, you know it's going to, it's going to be a hard campaign, you know, I take it seriously.
No, Mr. Mayor, it's reality.
Yeah.
God help me.
No, you will be all day long, as I told.
So, good luck with that. Now, anyone else, any other reports?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for coming. Thank you, police chief and Greg for a nice report. And I'll, I think we will have a nice election coming soon, because Mr. Mayor and our council members, it's going to be a nice competition. So, good luck to you both, and thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go inside the party.
Yeah, it's going to be a lot of fun.
With the chicken and fish.
Okay.
So, Mary, Samira doesn't like, no, hey, Mr. Councilman Hassan, Samira doesn't like that fish or chicken?
I don't know what Clardy, he don't go to breakfast anymore with me.
All right, yeah, he got a lot of money, he's going to spend a lot of money. He's going to sell another house this time. Every election, he sells one house to fund this campaign, that's good.
I mean, we can listen for you.
All right, thank you, guys, we have another round of public comments. Are there anybody, any?
Abraham Al-Jaheim, do you want to? That's it for public comment.
That's it, okay. All right, then we move to adjourn.
I motion?
All right, it's eleven, eight thirty-five.